Session of the American Council of the City of Bisbee, County of Cochise, and State of Arizona will be held on Tuesday, December 3, 2019, at 7:00 PM at the City Hall Building, 915 South Tolderville Road in Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Klein?
Ms. Klein.
You're Ms. Klein. Ms. Coronado? I was looking at you. Sorry. Ms. Coronado, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Louis Pollak?
Here.
Councilmember Joanie Jacomino?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins?
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns?
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hanson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Anna Kline?
Here.
City staff Teresa Coleman, City Manager, Ashley Coronado, City Clerk, Carrie Bagley, Finance Director, Joelle Landers, Personnel Director, Jesus Harrow, Public Works Director, George Castillo, Fire Chief, James Ledbetter, City Attorney.
Thank you. For the occasion, I'd like to take a moment of silence reflecting on the fact that although we are a paris accord city, it doesn't seem to be helping us any with the weather. And we've had some problems with flooding and so forth, and we have another storm coming tomorrow, and so, as well as the horrendous situation going on in the central and east part of the country. So I'd like to take a minute and just reflect on that and wish the very best to all of our residents while we're going through this next one. Thank you. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks so much. Thanks for being here. Those that are in attendance and those out in TV land, as they say, I hope all is well. The first thing is I have a proclamation, and this is Reefs Across America proclamation. Whereas the Reefs Across America Organization was formed in 2007 as an extension of the Arlington Reef Project of 1992, where reefs relate on the graves of fallen soldiers at Arlington National Cemetery, and whereas the mission of the Reefs Across America Organization is to remember the fallen, honor those that serve and their families, and teach the next generation about the values of freedom. And whereas each year Reefs Across America chooses a new theme to help supporters focus their messaging and outreach in their own communities, and has chosen the theme for 2019 as "Everyone Plays A Part." And whereas each year the mission is carried out by the coordination of reef lane ceremonies on a specified Saturday in December at Arlington National Cemetery, as well as veteran's cemeteries in other locations in all 50 states and beyond. And whereas Saturday, December 14, and has been designated by Reefs Across America Organization as a date for these ceremonies to occur, now therefore be it resolved that I, David M. Smith, Mayor of the City of Bisbee, Arizona, do hereby encourage all citizens to participate with Reefs Across America and be their witness in these ceremonies throughout our great nation. In witness thereof, I have here on two set my hand and cause the great seal of the City of Bisbee to be affixed this third day of December 2019. David M. Smith, Mayor. And could I ask Grace Wiggins to come up and accept this? As well as could I accept, ask the other members that are associated with this project to come on up? Thank you Cemetery Committee, and particularly Grace, and may I give you that? And thank you so very much. And sir?
Hi, my name is Michael Dominy. I'm with the Sheriff's Assist Team. Some of you may know, members of our group run the Howard Buffett Foundation here in this area, and Grace asked for some money, and we have a check for her for $1,000.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I would just like to say that if we could have the participation of everyone here to help, we reached our goal. We reached 958. Our goal was actually 900, so we'll need plenty of people to come and help lay the reefs, and we would appreciate if you would come out.
What time you want them there, Grace?
It starts at 10 o'clock, so if they can be there at that time. Because we do have a ceremony, the VFW, the Mountain Legion, the Legion Riders, the Boy Scouts, Bisbee High School are all involved in it, and so we would like to have the, see the ceremonies at those times.
Thank you. And on behalf of the city, again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Under announcements, first of all, item number 12, I will be pulling item number 12. You will not be hearing that tonight. In lieu of hearing that, it's going to be suggested that there be a Ward 1 meeting and that, in the future, and that we can all get together with Ward 1 representatives and the citizens and discuss the street issues and heartbeat, all the way through. So I will be pulling that. Chief Castillo, could I get you to come up here? How are you next to raining, extra things speaking, I just thought we, anyway, chief, I know that tomorrow's a big day. Tomorrow is your 29th anniversary with the city.
Wonderful.
All right. Well said, sir. Well said. The 14th, also in the afternoon, will be the rescheduled tree line ceremony at City Park, okay? That will be the 14th. On the 15th, December 15, at 3 o'clock, I will be providing a state of the city address and questions and answers. That'll be at the Senior Center from 3:00 in the afternoon to 5:00 in the evening. So please do feel free to come and look at the presentation, listen to the presentation, and then ask questions, and hopefully, hopefully I'll have answers. To let you know, this was kind of an abbreviated, two weeks since this last meeting because of all the, you know, the holidays and days off and so forth, but representing the city on the 20th, I represented the city, that would be November 20, at the Freeport-Mack Moran Community Partnership Panel. This is a quarterly meeting. On the 21st, I was present at the Ward 3 Town Hall meeting organized by Mr. Pollak, Pardon me, and attended, of course, by Ms. Klein, as well as some others. It was very cold and rainy, and, but it was, some good information was put out. On the 22nd, I had a meeting with Arizona Water, in which we discussed a potential P3 partnership, which is public, and a partnership with Arizona Water, discussing the potential of replacing in the future, together working to replace the old Bisbee fire suppression system. And on the same day, I traveled from that meeting, zipped over to Nogales, and attended the SGO Executive Board meeting on behalf of the city. So that's basically what, where we are right now. This holiday season gets kind of busy, but there's a lot of gaps. With that, I would like to go to call to the public, and we have Debbie Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I am actually here to speak on the item that you pulled, which you let me know, but you told me I could go ahead and address you now. Since we don't know when that meeting's going to be, and I don't know if I'll be available, at least I can give you my thoughts on the reversal of the direction of Shearer Avenue right now. My husband Mark and I, we've been here 20 years. We lived for five years right up on Shearer Avenue by the old high school, and for 15 years, as shown on the map there, in a house that directly overlooks this parking lot. We sit eight feet up, you can see the entire lot. As a matter of fact, we've made something of a sport of it, having benches turned out toward the parking lot, and grabbing a cocktail at 5:00 on Friday evenings and watching the traffic pour in. It's very entertaining. We see this proposal as really disruptive to the community for a problem that doesn't exist. The only part that we agree with is that the signs directing drivers to the public lot should be placed. This lot is never, ever underutilized, ever. It is always full during busy times to the point where people park where they shouldn't. Inconvenience in an area that is already inconvenienced many times a year, major holidays, Howell Street dances, Fourth of July, street closures, stair climbs, side plumbing, et cetera, closing the streets, detours, loss of parking for residents and workers, it just doesn't seem necessary to add to the problem. Going down Shearer is the shortest and the most straightforward exit point, not only for the residents, but for the two churches, Central School, FedEx, UPS, county workers, and those who are parked in the parking lot, most of whom, when we get to the bottom of Shearer, they turn left to go to Highway 80. The two signs directing to the parking lot could easily be placed at the corner of the museum, and then again one by Santiago's. What is needed, and we can tell you this from experience, is signage showing people how to get out of the parking lot. They don't know they can go down Shearer to get back to Main Street. It is easy enough to put a sign by the little monument across from the gym club on that island, and then another one on the island across from Canyon Road Streets that says, "This way out." Pretty simple. We have, over the years, watched literally hundreds of drivers get so frustrated, usually on Sunday mornings when they're leaving town, that they don't know how to get out of that lot, that they go the wrong way down Howell, past the Copper Queen, because that's how they got up. They know that would get them back to where they could get back to the highway. If you want to add to parking, this design would actually only add three spots, because the spot that's already there that says "No Parking" has this empty parking right behind the bank. There are places marked on the map that I gave you where people park all the time, especially on busy weekends, that could be striped as actual parking spaces, and it's actually even four of them. The four spaces drawn in behind the bank would have to be pretty small for cars or small cars only or motorcycles. A larger vehicle trying to make that sharp turn up Shearer couldn't swing wide to do that. Large vehicles have trouble turning left at the bottom as it is, and if there are cars parked there, it is really difficult. I would think it would add to the pedestrian concerns by having many more vehicles exiting Subway onto Main Street, right there at Ellen's Jewelry Store. There's a crosswalk there, and as we all know, driving through old Bisbee, tourists are not paying attention to where they're going. They're gawking, they're taking photos, and the chances of getting hit in that crosswalk, I think, would get higher. If traffic comes up Shearer, there's a sightline problem when you get to the top of that hill. The left side is clear, corner of the Y building is right there, there is a lot of pedestrian traffic along that side of the Y. Your car is going to be in front of the corner of the Y before you ever know if there are pedestrians there. Again, I think you're creating a problem that doesn't need to happen. So this plan, I don't think will solve the problem. It will compound it, be another, yet another inconvenience to the local residents and the workers. Is that my three minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I just, I got just a little, we think placing a higher value on providing visitors with direct access from Main Street, which this actually doesn't do, than on the quality of the day-to-day life of the residents and the workers is misguided.
Thank you, ma'am.
We need to put her on Streets and Infrastructure.
There you go. Sorry, eight years on pins and just playing for me. Thank you, Mark.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Lepley, you're down for item number 12. Now that it's polled, do you wish to speak, to call to the public, or just let it go at this point?
Sure.
I guess that's, yeah, so that, you, your three minutes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to explain, first off, that that was my idea to do the lane switch, and the thinking was out of frustration for Tombstone Avenue, which gets blocked up by tourists looking for parking. And there's a lot more traffic there than there are in side streets. So to decongest, help decongest, people looking for parking stopped in the middle of Tombstone. I know we've all experienced the frustration of that. That was one solution that the U of A came up with, is more signage. In that conversation, I was having, I thought of, well, if we have signage, we could think about putting, switching the one-way on that short street to get people off of Tombstone as quickly as possible. More signage can also be placed all around the city, getting people off of Tombstone. So that, that was a major thought. Another thing is when you're coming down Shearer, approaching Subway, that on the left side there, you've got a blind corner just across from Redbone. Pedestrian is walking right in front of cars, cars not stopping completely at that stop sign. That would eliminate that hazard as well, too. And so that's a safety concern. We were able to find four parking spots. There's actually a lot more parking spots that we can kind of do further up into that parking area, but those weren't provided here in that plan. I would say on a scale of 1 to 10, how important changing the one-way idea is, it's probably a 3. I didn't feel that strongly about it, it's just an idea. I think more importantly is signage and finding ways to add parking that doesn't cost the city money, and doing it when you put a new fog seal or a new asphalt down. You have to re-stripe anyways, might as well re-look and revisit. The overall plan I had was attempting to bring back a conversation of the U of A parking study that was done two years ago, that I helped the students on, that Mark Appel coordinated, because I could see that along with other things just disappearing under a title press, and I didn't want that to happen. So I do think it's a very good idea, getting Ward 1 citizens involved, because they have lots of ideas. They've, like they mentioned, they've been there for 20 years, 29, 28 years. They know all the spots that could be parked and better, that people turn around and they've got 15 times more experience than I do with that. So that's, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to accounts payable.
Accounts payable in the amount of $131,861.71.
Thank you, do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any questions?
I do.
Yeah.
On page 4, at the bottom for Grassy Park Restrooms, $609. Arizona Water Company, Grassy Park Restrooms, $609.42. Page 4.
I have the bill for here for Grassy Park. Where is it at?
This is page 4.
No, he's looking at the actual bill.
Oh, okay. Second. It's not showing on, it's not, oh, it's actually not showing on this one. Grassy Park.
Yeah. So I'm saying, I was just wondering if somebody, that's what I'm looking at.
Not that I know. We haven't, the only thing that we had there was recently, we had a gentleman that decided that rocks should go down the toilet, and so that caused, that caused a problem, so it was running, it was, we had a problem with that, but we haven't had a leak there.
That's, they paid $112 also. That's what it says, sorry. Got another one for you.
Okay.
Page 5, Hoekson is 358. Have you been watering? I'm using the water off of Hoekson, and that's on top of page 5, West Vista-Hoekson. I know sometimes you guys fill.
I'm looking at the actual water bill, so I'm trying to find out.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Where's, I have the entire water bill here. Oh, West Vista-Hoekson. How much did you say?
It says $358.
$358.48. Okay, so that, I do have that right in front of me here. The reason that is $358.44 is we have a too much water made there, and so we get charged $178.70 for no water, and then we add on the $133 that we charge for water. So that's the reason for a large bill that, at West Vista.
Is there really a need for a ton?
Yes, that's where we, that's where we fill our water truck and our, our backer truck.
Down the page, two issues, I guess, I think there are issues, it's with the pool. $315.80 for water, you're still filling the pool?
No, we're not filling the pool. We, let's see, there was a swimming pool. I don't, again, I, this on the bill I got here, I don't, it didn't show that it was there, so.
Yeah, and right above it's $154.28 for utilities for like public, Arizona Public Service.
They did use the, the pool facility for the, the stair climb? And we do have, we do have a group there that does a, that does a special use permit for that, so they use the showers, they do that, so.
But that's electric.
Electric, but they couldn't contribute to the water question yet.
Well, the water, yeah, but the 100, yeah, but for the electricity, $154, so I was wondering if the pumps were still on?
Nope.
Because that's an awful high level, or unless you have, what's your base for the pool?
I don't know what the electric budget is.
That just seems a little high for a non, non-operation.
Definitely will look into that.
Any other questions? All those in favor of paying accounts payable, signature by a standing aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda, plans to pay and leave. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular session of mayor and council held on November 5, 2019, at 7:00 PM. B, approval of a park facility and right-of-way use permit for return of the Turkey Vulture Parade from Main Street to Subway, Saturday, March 14, 2020, from 3:00 PM to 4:00 PM. This includes setup and breakdown. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda items A and B.
Ms. Coronado? Yes.
I, wait for you, see if anybody had a question on one. I'd like to have you poll, I'd like to have a question for B.
Surely. We'll poll B then. Would you, I, my, my fault, Ms. Klein, would you redo, refine your motion?
I move that we approve consent agenda item A.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Higginson? Second. Thank you. Ms. Jacomino?
Question? Next time for me to question?
Yeah.
Okay. Insurance is not required? I didn't see, did I overlook it? I didn't see any insurance included in it, that's why my question was, or any other time it was out. Did I miss it? Which is possible.
It's a city park.
Is it?
It's a, you're the parks.
Okay, I thought you missed it, so, okay, then, never mind.
All those in favor of, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Coronado, we need you to call a roll for item A.
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion, item A is approved. Item B, do we have a motion?
I move that we approve consent agenda item B. I second.
Do we have a motion? We have a second. Do we have any other questions? Hearing none, Ms. Coronado.
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Moving to old business, item number three, discussion on possible approval of ordinance O-19-06, amending the City Code, Article 7, light pollution, providing for repeal and This, is it, as we would call it, our second reading? Does anybody have any questions? Ms. Coleman? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I move to approve ordinance 0-19-06, amending the City Code, Article 7, light pollution, and providing for repeal and severability.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Coronado?
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Ordinance O-19-06 passes unanimously. Item number four, discussion on possible approval of, of ordinance O-19-08, amending the City Code, Chapter 8, Business Regulations, and adding regulations related to vacation rentals. This likewise is a second reading. Does anybody have any questions? Ms. Coleman? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
I move to approve ordinance 019-08, amending the City Code, Chapter 8, Business Regulations, and adding regulations related to vacation rentals.
I second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Coronado?
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously on ordinance O-19-08. New business, item number five, notice of the appointment of Councilmember Louis Pollak as Mayor Pro Tem. First of all, I wanted to thank Ms. Klein for this last year of service. This has certainly nothing to do with Ms. Klein. This is simply a, she, she's been Mayor Pro Tem longer than most mayors have been mayors here. Men, often I, so I do appreciate it, ma'am, very much. Thank you. I just thought it was something we would give someone else a, a chance to, to do for a while. And I would like to make this, this appointment leaving out for the upcoming year. I think that it's, according to the charter, it's up to the mayor to make the, the appointments, and so I think that it could be changed or not, and I've discussed this with Mr. Pollak. So with that, I intend to appoint Councilmember Pollak as Mayor Pro Tem. So, there we are. Now, item number six, discussion on possible approval of the recommendation from the Bisbee Arts Commission to funding grant application for Ken Bowe in the amount of $500 from the Bisbee Arts Commission Fund. Mr. Higgins?
Yes, we're in our giving away money phase. We raise money all year long. There was recently a newsletter that went out that indicated that this was taxpayer money, which it isn't. This is money that's raised by the Bisbee Arts Commission and dispersed by the Bisbee Arts Commission, so it is not taxpayer money. And we also are having a fundraiser next week at December 11, at the Convention Center from 5:30 to 9:00 to celebrate our cigar machine, which has been our main source of funds for this year. We usually have an art auction. This year, we're not having one because the cigar machine in the Convention Center is doing pretty well, and that's where the, this, the majority of our money is coming from. So having said that, I move to approve the funding of the grant application for Ken Bowe in the amount of $500 from the Bisbee Arts Commission.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Those in favor, signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven.
And, item number seven, uh, is, um, uh, a grant that we're giving to, uh, the, uh, Turkey Vultures, uh, uh, event, uh, which, uh, will, will take place later in the year, um, when, in the spring, when the Turkey, Turkey Vultures come back. And so, uh, I move to approve the funding of the grant application for Keno Daley in the amount of two hundred and ninety-five dollars from the Bisbee Arts Commission Fund.
My second.
Do we have a motion, we have a second. Those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Discussion of possi-, item number eight, discussion on possible approval of the recommendation from the Bisbee Arts Commission to fund a grant application for Francis J. Kaiman, AKA Pablo Pencil, in the amount of five hundred dollars from the Bisbee Arts Commission Fund. Mr. Higgins?
Okay, this is, uh, for a mural in Presbyterian Annex, uh, uh, there, um, outdoor space. Uh, it's going to be open to all residents of the city, uh, plus, um, and, you know, and anybody at any time. They're trying to make a little urban oasis in, uh, in the, uh, Annex there. And this is for a mural. So I, uh, I move to approve the funding of the grant application for Francis J. Kaiman, also known as Pablo Pencil, in the amount of five hundred dollars from the Bisbee Arts Commission Fund.
Second.
Do we have a motion, we have a second. Those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine, uh, discussion on possible approval of the recommendation from the Bisbee Arts Commission to fund a grant application for Tonette Durocher in the amount of five hundred dollars from the Bisbee Arts Commission Fund. Mr. Higgins?
Uh, this is also a, uh, another mural that's going to be in the, in the same area, uh, in the, um, courtyard of the Presbyterian Annex. And I move to approve the funding of the grant application for Tonette Durocher in the amount of five hundred dollars from the Bisbee Arts Commission Fund.
My second.
Do we have a motion, we have a second. Those in favor, uh, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item number ten, discussion on possible approval of a notice of intent to adopt ordinance O nineteen dash O nine, dissolving the I Bisbee Committee. I am the liaison to the I Bisbee Committee. Having attended their meetings and discussing it with the committee, they believe that their accomplishments, uh, which have taken place in the past, uh, have fulfilled the mission that they were originally put together for, which was six years ago. And, uh, it is the vote of that committee that they be dissolved, that I bring forward to the, uh, to the council. I would like to, uh, make a motion to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O nineteen dash O nine.
My second.
Do we have any questions? Hearing none, Ms. Cornado.
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item eleven, discussion on possible approval to purchase a bus shelter from the Arizona Correctional Industries to be installed at Safeway for bus riders. Jesus Haro, public works director, welcome, sir.
Good to Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, the item, uh, before you tonight is to purchase the bus shelter. We're in the second year of the grant cycle for the Federal Transit Administration. Um, with that, we get, um, sis-, what is it? The exact amount that we get is five thousand four hundred dollars, um, from that, that's the maximum we can get. So the, so the purchase price of the, um, bus shelter is six thousand three hundred dollars and six thousand three hundred thirty and twenty-seven cents. Um, so we, the, the grant itself is a ninety-ten, but because the, we may go over the max, we are going to be paying, um, nine hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-seven cents rather than, so, we're going over a little bit. Um, the Arizona Correctional Industry is a, is on a cooperative contract. And for that, do you have any questions?
I have a question. What do you decide Safeway and that's almost like Penn Town, that could use a lot, so.
The, the, um, our, our Transit, uh, Committee chose that one. Um, it's, it, it, that's not, that's, that's not completely final. We still have to have the approval from Safeway. We have, um, spoken with them, we give, we notified them that we would like to do that. They haven't given their final approval for that. If they choose not to, then we will either maybe relocate that bus stop to somewhere, it's in the area, or we can place it in another place.
I was just curious about, I have a question.
Is there a plan as far as, um, where, uh, the bus stops are needed, where the shelters are needed? Is, is there been sites that have been scoped out?
I don't know a formal plan. Um, I know that that, that stop is a popular stop, and so that's one we want to. There are a few stops that we do need to make adjustments to. But for the most part, all of our stops are, um, in, in pretty decent locations. There are a few that need to be just moved just a little bit. For example, um, the one on, um, what is it? Uh, school terrace and center. That one needs to be adjusted just a little bit. Still be in the same area, but those types of things.
Any other questions?
How many bus stops do we have and how many shelters do we have?
I believe we have only one shelter. We have a second shelter. I believe there's one shelter in place. We do have a second shelter that was placed at the senior center. Um, so we actually have that. We can place that one, and this one would be the third one.
Okay.
I couldn't tell you offhand the exact number of bus stops we have. Twenty, some, twenty-four, I think.
Is, is there an analysis or anything going on as far as which places might need the, the shelters?
We don't have a formal analysis going on right now.
Thank you.
Okay.
Obviously, some are much busier than, than.
Right, and that's the reason.
In some are, in the city and some are in the county.
Yes.
Do we have a, um, a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of a bus shelter from Arizona Correctional Industries to be installed at Safeway for bus riders.
My second.
All those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Item number thirteen, discussion on possible approval of an addendum to the services agreement with Synthes Corporation to provide uniform rental, uh, facility services, products, rental, and laundry services. Déjà vu. Mr. Haro, public works director.
Um, so, the, this, this, this addendum is going to be adding options for our staff to choose different types of pants. Um, currently, we have with our current provider only one type of pant. This one will provide them three types of pants, so they can choose between the two. Um, there is no additional car-, I mean, there is a slight few cents between, say, like, the traditional five-pocket jeans and a, the Carhartt cargo pants. A few cents per, per jeans. Each staff member will still receive the same amount of influence, so it can, cost increases very slight. What this al-, this also does is, um, adds the lockers to our garage facility at no cost to, to, uh, the city. So it adds, it adds that also. And, and originally, tho-, that, those options were inadvertently left off. We had always planned on them, and it, and it wasn't until we, last week, were doing our uniform fittings, that we noticed it wasn't on there, so we apologize for that.
Let's find any questions. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve an addendum to the service agreement with Synthes Corporation to provide uniform rental, facility service, products rental, and laundry service.
My second. Ms. Cornado.
Mayor Pro Tem Pollock?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number fourteen, discussion on possible approval of the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O nineteen, O five, amending the city code, chapter six, animals, and providing for repeal and separability. Ms. Coleman?
So, as you may recall, we kind of started on this cap because we were missing a little leash, um, portion of the law, uh, which then brought to everyone's attention, um, some of the provisions that were in the existing ordinance. Um, because of the concerns about the existing ordinance, we basically just went back to the drawing board with a clean slate, um, to provide you with, uh, ordinance to consider that would, um, replace all of chapter six with the new ordinance. Um, so this does include the leashes. It does, um, also take into account some recent activity that's involved our legal counsel. And then, our legal counsel provided us with some other, um, suggestions on how to make this ordinance work better for the city.
Thank you. Do we have questions?
Yeah, I have to do, yeah. Go ahead, Leslie.
Ms. Johnson?
Um, so I have several questions.
Okay.
Uh, first of all, I think the biggest thing that concerns me is, uh, that the part about defanning and declining dogs. The, uh, American Veterinary Medical Association recommends a box muzzle rather than ever defanning or declining. And, um, they say that that's not ever good. So I was wondering if we could maybe revisit that part of it, the defanning and decline. I was wondering what the rest of the council feels about that. I also wonder how we're going to enforce the not feeding feral cats part of it. Um, because, you know, research has shown that feeding bans don't really work. People will sneak out in the middle of the night to feed cats in their neighborhood. Um, I'm also kind of curious what the point is of limiting people to owning five cats. And, um, let's see. And what diseases were, were, when we talk about diseased animals, are we talking about, like, leukemia, or are we talking about ringworm? Because that's kind of a vague definition. And then I'm wondering, did we consult with our animal shelter people at all when we were writing this ordinance? Because that's a big base of knowledge that we could be tapping into. And they, you know, I'll be honest, they came to me with concerns, uh, once they read this ordinance. And, so, yeah, that's everything I have written down.
So I'm going to tag team off her. Um, from a biological standpoint, for the six-point, one-point, eight, feeding of feral cats, you take away the feeding of feral cats, and there's going to be a tenfold increase on the population of the birds, reptiles, amphibians disappearing, because there is now no food source. I know feral cats are a problem with wild birds and other animals, but once you take away that food source of the crazy cat ladies around, like, some of us, um, that's going to give them nothing else to go for. And so, you're going to have an issue with them invading our indigenous populations. Um, and that's pretty much been evacuated. And again, the declining and the defanning, um, other than my own personal opinion, thinking that's cruel and unusual punishment to an, an animal, it's, uh, very much not recommended by the veterinary, not only because they have no defense after the fact, but it also sets them up for, um, infections. Um, because of the problems that go into the same cats. People that declaw their cats is one of the worst things they can do. Uh, there are other things, like she said, uh, ways to, um, take care of vicious, I guess that's, that what is pertaining to vicious dog. Have them kennelled or, um, and personally, it may sound cruel and unusual, but, uh, if you've got a vicious dog, I would rather see it in a nice size than defanning and declawing. I, that's, to me, that's just harsh. That's my personal.
So, um, yes, I did invite, uh, Kelly, uh, Gallego to coffee, um, and did offer her an opportunity, um, to discuss with me any concerns that she might have regarding, uh, animal ordinance. Um, she did not offer me any direct, um, suggestions or preferences, um, at that coffee, but, but I did reach out to her and we did have coffee together.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, regarding five cats?
Yes.
Um, that, um, helps us in situations where, um, folks, um, may be harboring more cats than they can care for, um, and provide, uh, veterinary assistance for. Um, diseases is not limited, um, so that any animal that is being denied veterinary care and periods of disease, um, could be addressed. I think I'm missing a couple of your first points, though.
Feeding, defeating feral cats.
Oh, defending, yeah. Yes.
Um, as to the defanning and declining issue, that's six-two-point, two-point-five, subpart C. And you'll notice that that's a judicial determination. So there are five subparts of things that can happen. The dog could first be confined indoors or securely disposed and locked and kennelled, that's option one. Option two is the dog is spay or neuter. Option three is then the defanning or decline. Option four is that the dog is euthanized in a safe and humane manner. Then option five is the court requires such other release as appropriate under circumstances. So it is just, the defanning and declining is just one of the five various options that would be available to court after determination the dog is vicious. So that would be a court direction combined with the dog's owner for them to help make a determination what's the appropriate disposition of the dog. It could include, as Councilmember, uh, Shilka Mo, as I mentioned, uh, that it could be utilization. But it could also be securing the dog in an appropriate manner based upon the court's order. And it just gives the court an additional option of the five choices, which would include defanning and declining, but that's just one option of the five. The, um, I can state one thing that, um, with the feeding of feral cats, the feral cat is a wild animal, and there are state statutes on feeding wild animals. And so all this did is make that a more clear, uh, situation.
Well, I mean, how are we going to enforce that?
Well, I can tell you that there's allegations that certain people, um, have a large number of cats at their residence, and say, these aren't my cats, but they put food out for these animals. And they, in those cases, it's easily documented and they would be cited.
Okay.
It, it's not, there's not going to be, uh, the food police going around watching, looking at people's backyards, but it gives the city a, if you'll pardon the expression, teeth, uh, in, for problem areas and problem people.
Okay, so I have a question to that then. So you've identified them and you cited them, so then what happens to feral cats? Because the problem is still there. Yeah, and it goes back to what I said.
Well, hopefully you get trapped.
Well, and then what's going to happen to them, or we're going, you know, that's the thing. Because if you quit feeding something that's been fed, whether you identify it as wild or not, it's not wildlife, it's a feral cat, it's still going to go find something else to eat, and that's my concern. What's going to happen to our, our indigenous bird populations there? And granted, they already feed on them somewhat, I mean, that's a given. But you take away their main food source, which is that person feeding them, and it's going to increase a tenfold.
Well, the idea, yes, I understand that, Ms. Giacamino. The idea, of course, is to alleviate feral cats. It's not to harbor them or to encourage their, uh, their, their existence. And literature that we received, Councilwoman, suggests that the feeding them increases the population. And if you feed them, the population increases, and cats can breed exponentially. And consequently, the making it available for them to feed actually increases and affords the problem, at least according to the Audubon Association. I am not an expert on that, I'll quickly address your, but the literature that we reviewed and prepared in the ordinance suggests that the Audubon Association recommends non-feeding of feral cats to decrease the population, to increase the population. But your point is well-taken. In the short run, they are looking for food sources. Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment. I think this is one of the most comprehensive and well-written ordinances that I have read. There are some troubling things about it, but it's the nature of the problem to be troubling. And, uh, all in all, I see it as a very good step in the right direction.
I, I do have one other comment. Um, you, you talked about, when she asked you how you're going to deal with it, you know, now you're going to, people feeding them feral cats. I think one of the bigger issues that we have, even bigger than feral cats, you may or may not agree with me, is the feeding of wildlife in general. And people feeding them halalina and gentle deer, because it won't run you down necessarily and attack you, but halalina, we have a halalina problem in Wa-, on the backside of Warren, where people are feeding, and they'll attack children.
It's, it's.
And that is an issue. So I'm just curious, you know, are we, is that going to be pursued with as much gusto with feral cats?
I hope so.
It's snarky, but, um, that is a concern.
We have people who feed sc- We have people who feed skunks, too.
Right. I mean, in my neighborhood, I have birds of javelina. I know a lot of it has to do with people who are feeding it, so...
That's why I can tell you that I spoke with the council, and I asked for that clause to be put in there, because state law specifically states there'll be no feeding of wild animals, and it exempts Cochise County because of our population base. Pima County and Maricopa County, they're only two counties that it fits. And so I asked for it to be put into the city code. Because of javelina, deer, I had a neighbor that was... Thought it was great to feed squirrels, rock squirrels, but until they came into their house, eating through the screens and eating dog food and everything else out of their pantry, so some of these critters are a problem.
I do have one of those statements, I guess it's for you. If you read six-point-one-point-eight, section B, A1 and 2, it says exceptions. The person may feed or harbor birds and squirrels. But if you go to six-point-four-point-two, unlawful feeding of wild penalties, wildlife penalties, all except for...
Tree squirrels are permissible in both instances, not ground squirrels.
Correct.
Or rock... Some people call them rock squirrels. Tree squirrels and birds are permissible.
I misread.
Okay?
Thanks.
Anything else? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve notice of intent to adopt ordinance zero nineteen oh five amending the city code chapter six animals and providing for repeal and severability.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second, Ms. Cornado.
Mayor Pro Tem Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes five to two. City manning, please, for sure.
Oh, my goodness. And I bet you're looking at my pages, so... So I had mentioned a few meetings back that I was looking into the vehicles parking within forty-eight hours on Indian Street. I did send a letter out to the property owners, just letting them know that in order to balance the special benefit of having the vehicles there with complaints I've received regarding making parking available for customers and property owners, that I was asking them to provide me with current registration and insurance on towable vehicles in order to obtain permission to leave and park for more than forty-eight hours. I did ask that they allow us for four days, three times a year, that they would remove their vehicles so that we could do street inspections or street work, and also let them know we would provide them with forty-eight hours' notice if we did need to have vehicles moved in order to accommodate a right-of-way permit or work that would need to be done there. So those letters will most likely go in mail tomorrow. Fleet management, it hasn't disappeared. We do have some updates from the county on obtaining vehicles through their program, so we're working to balance vehicles available through the county with a program through e-fleets, through enterprise. So as soon as we can find the right balance there, we'll bring that to the council for consideration. Today, we did host two visitors from deluxe.com. They came to town to tour our small businesses as part of the Small Business Revolution project. We're one of ten finalists, hoping to make it into five, top five, and then from there, it's a public voting campaign to choose a city that will receive up to $500,000 in assistance to up to six businesses. That was today. Dot Camp House Media LLC will provide you with reports of their activities behalf of the city at your next meeting. We're continuing to review the nuisance ordinance, and we will share a number random from your attorney with you in the next couple of days in advance of your next meeting. And at your next meeting, we'll be reviewing a new IGA for reorganized tourism and economic council through Cochise County.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Higgins?
I move to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We stand adjourned.